All right, now I'm good. This is the regular meeting of the Mohamad Seymour Board of Education called to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, September 18th. At this time, I'd like everyone to remind everyone to sign in. Send your cell phones. And I want to remind our visitors that we do have a public comment form. In order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those who wish to make comments to the board, read those visitor guidelines and plead a form, turn it in to Joanie. Public participation is only allowed during the public participation portions of the meeting. Other than those times, board meetings are not interactive with those in attendance. Roll call, Joanie, please. Lamb? Jordan?
Here.
Severns?
Here.
Rock?
Here.
McComb?
Here.
Bannister?
Here.
McMurray? Here. This evening, we are excited to welcome some students from Middletown Prairie to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll have those guys come up.
All right, closing remarks to the board. A PTO is a state school. And it's been very fun for two days. One mission under the board. In a small, whatever routine that has to follow. Time.
Okay, so we have Chris Martin from Middletown Prairie and several of his very important students giving us a quick building update and spotlight on what is happening at Middletown Prairie. Make sure you introduce yourselves, too.
Well, do. All right, I would like, first of all, my name is Ryan Martin. I'm the principal here at Middletown Prairie. I have three very special guests today. We have a kindergartner named Sloane Davis, a first grader named Dylan Snow, and a second grader named Claire O'Prondick. And we are here to talk to the board and spotlight some things going on at Middletown Prairie. And with that as a story to tell, the first isn't a very good story. You can see up here, we have some pictures of the problem that we have had on our playground. Once that pops up here, you can see some mud pits. And there's three sections in particular that are very muddy and oftentimes are not able to be used. Sloane is a first year here, so she doesn't know any difference. But we have two that are going to talk about the difference between now and then. So in a combination, you can see the left is the before picture, the right is the after picture. We had a combination between the district, the PTO, and the MS Foundation that came together. And this took about three years to plan and fundraise and work together to come up with a plan that we have artificial turf with some new play equipment that is more enjoyable and spreads kids out. So here's a picture of all of those areas. You can see there's a rock wall, there is a nature playscape with logs and tree stumps. That's a balance beam. And then there's a section that is all turf that the kids love to play on and just run around and rub the artificial turf. And it feels very much like park. So the kids like it. So I'm going to ask. Sloane, you know, why don't you want to come around here and come on up? And you can tell us what you think about the new playground. Is there anything that you like the most?
The logs.
Tell everybody what the logs do. What do you do on the logs?
Climb on them and jump each one.
Does that pretty fun?
Yes.
Is there anything else you like?
The spikes.
Awesome, all right. Thank you so much for telling us, all right? All right.
Good job, Sloane.
Dylan, you want to come on up? Dylan is someone who has experienced the mud pits and now he can enjoy it all year round. What do you think, Dylan, between last year and this year?
Well, it's last one year and you can play there and there's out there. So you don't have to close, just nose it down.
Yes, is there anything in particular that you really like over all the other stuff?
I like the rock climbing.
Rock climbing wall? Awesome, well, thank you, Dylan. And Claire is our second grader who also has experience with the new playground. So first of all, Claire, can you tell the board what you like about the new changes?
I like you, you can like play on them. And you can't, you won't get super ready like if you come inside.
Yes, I think our custodian certainly appreciates it. So thank you very much, Claire. You go take a seat.
Good job, Claire.
One observation from administrative role is being outside with 250 kids at once during lunchtime and not being able to use those three spaces, it really gets crowded quickly. And as you know, when a lot of kids in one compact area, problems happen. It's definitely help me if you spread the kids out and you truly get to see these areas being used every day. And it's very exciting to have a thought and a process happen over three years and make it happen. So thank you to the PTO, thank you to the MS Foundation and the district for collaborating with me on this. And I'm happy that we're experiencing it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire.
Just suspend the meeting and go investigate the playground.
Get on the bounce. I want to see you jump from one to one.
You can charge people in.
I mean, we've got the dog off, we can have the best job. You guys did a great job. That was a whole part. Okay, we're going to continue with that again next month with a visit, a spotlight on Lincoln Trail.
Or Atlas Program.
Atlas Program. All right, so our next item, you all do not have to stay, but feel free to. You're welcome to. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. You've all had a chance to look it over. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you, advisor. Any discussions? Okay, this is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who vote aye. Thank you. Any more public participation forms? All right, so consent agenda items tonight include... Do I have all of mine?
Oh, but I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just want to make sure I have all of mine. Read off everything.
I did bring up that one.
It is minutes from August 21st for our regular meeting and closed meeting. Special meeting minutes from September 11th, open and closed. It is our treasures report, it is our September bill list. It is our personnel changes and an overnight trip request. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Some of them.
Thank you, is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, any discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call for them now, please. Bannister?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb? Severns?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
McMurray? Yes. Dr. Beckley has some introductions to make. All right, so we have a few introductions this evening. Some of our teachers here in the back room, as I read your names, you could come on up and I'll read your little bio for us. So first up is going to be Kevin Simons. Oh yeah, there we go. All right, so Kevin grew up in Rogers, Illinois. He graduated from the University of Illinois in 2013 with a bachelor's of science in specialized chemistry and a minor in secondary education. He has spent his last 10 years teaching at Rancho Township High School, then St. Joseph Ogden High School. He has loved his first few weeks at Mohamad Seymour, working with his extraordinary department and fantastic students, and is very excited to continue collaborating on the chemistry curriculum moving forward. So please welcome Kevin to the district. All right, Dr. Carolina Roca. Carolina Roca grew up in Argentina, South America. She graduated with a degree in history education in 1993 and from the University of Texas in 2001 with a PhD in Spanish. She has spent the past 15 years teaching Spanish at Southern Illinois University in Edwardsville. Currently, Carolina lives in Savoy with her husband. She enjoys staying physically active through working out and practicing yoga. She also enjoys reading, spending time with family, and traveling. Carolina is excited to join the Mohamad Seymour School District and is looking forward to working with students in the fall. Welcome, Dr. Roca. You're up.
I'm an A, Miss Bannister.
All right, Jared LaFrono is our new media specialist at the high school. He grew up in Monticello, Illinois and graduated from Illinois State University in 2001 with a bachelor's of science in social sciences education. And then from the University of Illinois in 2009 with a master's in library and information sciences. He has taught history at Rancho Township High School and was most recently the media specialist and librarian at St. Joseph's Ogden High School. Currently, Jared lives in Urbana with his wife and daughter. He enjoys home improvement projects, reading, cooking, and walking his dog. Jared is very excited to be a bulldog. Welcome, Jared. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beckley. That's everybody. Yeah, we're good. Okay, just like I told the kids, you do not need to stay at family or meeting. If you'd like to, you're welcome to, but you can also just enjoy your evening. Item next item is donations.
Yes, we have several donations this month totaling $5,474.71. We have a donation from Stephen and Pamela Kurtz to Mom's Pantry in the amount of $1,500. The Mohamad Christian Church, through donations from the Vacation Bible Study Program, is donating $1,462.76 to Mom's Pantry. We have a donation from Monocle's Pizza to the Band Activity Fund in the amount of $511.95. We have an anonymous donation of $500 to Mom's Pantry. The Rotary Club of Mohammed has donated $500 to the McKenney-Bento Program. And then we also have an in-kind donation from the Champaign County Farm Bureau of a tower garden to Lincoln Trail 5E classroom. And the in-kind donation's in $5,000. So again, for the total of $5,474.71, we certainly appreciate the generosity of our community once again.
This is where I recommend the approval of the donations as presented.
Some of them.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Sure.
Good. Any other discussion?
I was just curious what the McKenney-Bento program is.
The McKenney-Bento program is through homeless. So that's when people claim homelessness, that is through the McKenney-Bento app.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, all right, Roca, vote. Severns?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Lamb? Jordan?
Yes.
McMurray? Yes, and thank you, Dr. Beckley. All right, communication, is there anybody from PTO? Right, MSA. Foundation, it's usually just... Okay, all right, let's move to visitors. Ms. Sarah Rocknow? So y'all have five minutes. I'll give you a heads up when you're close to being simple.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, it's my first time doing this, this school year. Good evening, I am here to discuss dress code and Mohamad Seymour PTO. I've been looking through the dress codes and what I discovered is that some groups are negatively, negative, you know, in fact, impacted by the dress code. I won't share names out of respect for privacy, but I will read a message I have received from my parents during my research. My daughter, who wears plus size clothing, was pulled out of the, pulled out from the classroom for wearing a crop top. She was instructed to put on her PE uniform or to go home and change. When I arrived to pick her up, I noticed that a much skinnier student was wearing the same crop top as my daughter. Both my daughter and students were showing the same amount of skin. That student walked right past the teacher with no problem. I believe that she was singled out simply because she isn't popular and is different from other students. Other parents have reported that their children or child were sent home for reasons including, not limited to, showing shoulders and shoulder blades, hair color, religious clothing, shorts, hat, and an endless list of other reasons. For the student handbook rule five, clothes that show excess skin is not allowed to be worn at school. This rule, in my opinion, is completely biased and primarily targets women. Do I believe that schools, that the schools should change their uniform? Absolutely not. I believe uniforms to be tacky and it restricts and conceals a person's identity. Our youth are finding out for the art by dressing in various ways. And I expect that all members of staff will treat every student equally if you are going to enforce the dress code. Now let's talk about Mohamad Seymour PTO. I'm aware that the board has no influence over the Mohamad Seymour PTO and that my statement is largely overdue. But I feel like you have a right to be informed. When I attended my first PTO meeting the previous year, it was suggested that someone take on the role of a volunteer coordinator. I enthusiastically offered my assistance and they accepted my help. A week later, I received an email explaining that I was ineligible to serve as a volunteer coordinator because I was not a parent to a child in the school system. This completely insulted me and to be honest, I did not respond the best back to that email. For those of you who do not know me very well, I have PCOS. It is a condition that makes it difficult for me to become pregnant because of cyst in my reproductive system. And numerous doctors have told me that I will never be able to have children. Aside from working at the school, this is the closest I'll ever get to being a parent. Therefore, it is clear why the email was such a slap in the face. Anyone, no matter if they have children or not, can sign up to volunteer. So it begs the question as to why joining the PTO requires you to have a child, but volunteering is open to those without. In conclusion, I think that regardless whether they have kids or not, should be part of the PTO. Someone without children like myself offer an entirely new viewpoint and might even come up with some brilliant ideas for the school. As for dress code, I want to pose a question. Did my clothing today really impact you on what I was saying? Wearing short shorts, crop top, I'm showing some of my stomach. I'm 5'2", I'm 224 pounds and considered obese in my age range. Yet I am comfortable and happy with my body. But consider for a moment that you are sending kids, your kids, home who resemble me and let other students wear these clothes without any problem and vice versa. How do you think that impacts their mental health and self-esteem? I'm grateful that you took the time out of your busy day to consider my recommendations. Thank you. Also, this is completely unrelated. I have a complaint, not against you, and I want to make that very aware. I will be passing this out. This is for you guys to look over when you guys get home.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Jordan? Mr. Rock?
Obviously, it's not here. Sorry, I put these in alphabetical order, they were maybe not smart.
Mr. McComb? Ms. McMurray? Mr. Rock? Okay, I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to me. Thank you.
Okay, Eric?
It's not the first time here, it's well known. I am Eric Anderson of Dunbar Street, locally. Stakeholder, as taxpayer. You know, it's an all-around concerned individual. Goes on in schools, in society at large. Been trying to hammer a point home for a couple of years, a few points. Limited but not including what's in the library, school library. Where are these, where are the lesson plans and the textbooks? One copy to read there, one copy to check out. Why is this not being addressed? It's like, you know, the people, you know, the parents and everyone else, they want to look and see what's being presented and what their children are learning. I certainly do and I think most anyone else would. So I'd like to find out when I'm done speaking, somebody wants to take the floor and address some of these concerns of mine, that would be just fantastic. Comments after the meeting, just like in the football game, great job team, blew that play, whatever goes on. When this meeting's over, people should be able to punch in. That's your public. Not everybody can make it over here as I do and I'm getting frustrated doing so because of the lack of response to what I consider legitimate and honorable and reasonable concerns, all right? So that's another one. And another one's like, you know, we're always talking about overcrowding. This junior high, so a friend of yours, Mark, and I went touring the junior high. We know it's peeling paint, I wonder, because that was last spring, this summer, did that painting get taken care of? You know, in some of the hallways and stuff, did that janitor's closet was opened up with all the plaster busted off and some masonry? Go in there and get that all shopped up? Or we just going to let this deteriorate to the point which, you know, then it looks better, a worse optic, and then, you know, force a new building? You know, those are the things I want to know about. And I will yield my remaining time to Mr. Thompson should he need it. Thank you very much.
Well, that's appreciated considering the last, first time I spoke, I was negated on you two. And if you guys remember, she immediately said we were not going to allow me to do that. She didn't want discussion. There is no transparency in this school system. And that's where you two and you two come in. The four of you can call for a vote. And if you all vote yes, we could have commentary after this board meeting. We could have those books over at the library, two of each books from every class taught in this school. You are aware that what we're doing here is being done all over the country when it comes to curriculum and CRT, right? You are paying attention. You can nod, it's totally legal. You do know what's going on across the country, yes? Yes? You cannot, that's part of the rules, right? You could speak to me right now. We can't when this is over. But there's some serious stuff coming down the pipe with the Department of Education, indoctrination, and sexualization. And that's not a stretch by any means if you're paying attention to what's being taught to these kids. I mentioned Pritzker and his two cousins are heavily involved in surgeries for transvestites. You know that? They got skin in the bank. Tens of millions of dollars have been put into it by the Pritzker family. What's Pritzker's job? To make it mandatory in the schools in Illinois. And if you knew what was going on with puberty blockers and where this leads, you would, if you had any heart and brains, you'd understand where I'm coming from. And you'd say, you know what, we need more transparency. I don't know what's happening in this school at this minute, but Mac said there was no CRT. Lindsay Hall said there was no CRT. Rummel said there was no CRT. And I found a link to them talking to a professor at the U of I bringing CRT into this entire school district. Red, white, and blue there it was. Speaking of colors, I did see the women's cross, the girls' cross-country team poster on my phone, I don't know if it's printed out. What is it? A girl running with a rainbow flag behind her. You have to understand the rainbow flag has been commandeered by the gays throughout the world. And it's pathetic. You go out in this hall and all you see is rainbow colors. You see a sign that says, "Welcome" in rainbow colors. This is a safe space. That's all brainwashing these kids, whether you know it or not. It is, and it's pathetic. Why don't we go to red, white, and blue or orange and blue? Welcome, orange and blue. This is a great place, not a safe place. When you walk on this property, it's a safe space. I would like to think. You have to go through that door to be in a safe space? That's absurd, absolutely absurd. You four can bring this vote up and you can make transparency happen. You're the new guy. You're capable, right? You could put a camera right there and show when I speak or anyone stands up here and speaks, you can hit a keystroke, boom! Every other board meeting in the world does it that way, but this one. We're right here saying, hey, guys at home, you don't even know who I am. You can't even see my inflection. My inflection matters. But it's negated in this room. The vaccine, I'll jump here. You guys remember I told you not to take a vaccine a year ago? Don't take it, whatever you do, don't take it. You know, the word's out on how bad that vaccine is. It's being suppressed still, but the, oh, you smile? They're getting ready to turn out another vaccine, totally untested, absolutely incapable of being able to, it's not even a vaccine, it's mRNA technology. And if you knew anything about... about graphene oxide nanotechnology, you'd be scared to death to put that in your body or any child's body. Absolutely, you would understand the ramifications. All the myocarditis, absolutely ineffective, that vaccine. The numbers are skyrocketing throughout the country, and you're gonna see more of it. So I'm just looking at the future, knowing the decisions you have to make, and hoping that the four of you, because I know their votes and I know his vote, the four of you can make something happen. I want to see what kind of metal you're made of, what, what, where you come from. This is serious business that's coming down the pipe, if it's not already here, and plenty of it is already here. When Sonny sent Mary from Pride, Gay Pride from Champagne, she came for eight or nine meetings. And, and?
Five minutes per speaker.
You guys are okay. Mary from Gay Pride, the director of that, came in here, and she came month after month, and then Sonny, who was sitting right here, says, I'll talk to her and tell her about our programs. You know what? She never came to another meeting. And you know what? The grand marshal of the Pride program out of Champagne was educators, because they know the importance of educating, of brainwashing these children through the educational system. The stuff's happening here, your votes matter, your votes matter, we know your votes. So it really gets down to that, and you, you know what? Being in business all my life, you know what I've seen? The best thieves and con artists are the nicest people. That's why they get away with it. So what's being said behind closed doors, you have to really weigh, don't take it for face value. There's a lot more going on under, under currents, and a lot of it is money, like the Pritzkers. I'll yield this time and say, it's a spiritual battle, it's really a spiritual battle, and I do care about your souls, and I care about these 3,000 kids in this school district, and I hope you have the understanding of how important it is to man that seat, belly up to the bar, and I would love to see this school say, you know what? Mr. Thompson's right, we have to have more transparency, we have to work for the, the parents, we have to look at the future, see what's coming down the pipe, and stop it before it gets here. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jen Goss, I'm at 10, 1007 Marianna Drive. Tonight, I'm here representing Clearview Farm and wanted to come in and make a special thank you to the Mohammed Seymour FFA group. Though the kids actually started helping us out with a pollinator project that we just completed last week with their help. In the spring, we delivered about 1,000 plants to them in little plugs those kids took, and we provided them with soil, we provided them with gallon pots, they repotted everything. And then a special thank you to Ms. Addie Legacy, who actually used that as her supervised ag experience this summer to take care and water those plants all summer long and keep them so we could plant them this fall. Last, uh, last Wednesday, 27 FFA students came out. I'm gonna read all their names as a public thank you to each and every one of them. Mara Gilbert, Erin Dallas, Erin Applegate, Alexis Wagner, Grant Arbuckle, Katie Essencio-Garcia, Ty Clark, Mason Orton, Gracie Pang, Cheyenne Stevens, Addie Legacy, Lily Bosworth, Brayden Lamb, Cassie McKinney, Colton McClure, Tyler Majeris, Olivia Robinson, Callie Turner, Isaac Burge, Hannah Martin, Colby Dietz, Jack Jessup, Taylor Mills, Brooklyn Dyer, Andy Kilar, and Hannah Vick. Those 27 students came out there, they were super respectful, worked their butts off, they planted 1,000 plants all by themselves, they spread mulch, they spread rock, they did a lot. I apologize, I had a video, and I do have a video that I will send to each of you.
Yeah, you actually, you send it to us and, and pictures or whatever, and we can put that on the.
I, I will. Our server is down this evening, so otherwise I would have handed you a, a stick with it on there. So we've got a time lapse of one limit, one limit, one minute time lapse video that shows those kids out there. They never stopped, we had lunch for them, they even, the, the people that sat down last were the first back out there. They were there from nine o'clock till about 1:30. Unfortunately, they were a little bit in the background on WCIA, they didn't use Addie Legacy's report, they talked to her for probably five minutes, now maybe it's been on since then. But I just, in all the things that people complain about, you need to know that those kids were rock stars, and that, that program, a special thank you to those of you who voted to add two teachers because the program has exploded. Those kids, it's not about sows, cows, and plows, it's about these kids finding the potential for a career in agriculture. And, I mean, I had the opportunity to talk to each and every one of them, and, I mean, they just made me smile the whole day long. So you needed to hear that things were good, they did a great job, I'm super proud of them, and you should be too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, um, building reports were in our packet, take some time for board communication. Does anybody have like an urge to start? I feel like I will be the best starter.
Yeah, I came here with a list of things that were really exciting and encouraging to me. I'll start with Dog of Palooza. I believe this is our first regular meeting since Dog of Palooza, and Dog of Palooza is always a special event, mostly because you can see, you know, all the, all the high schoolers' hard work materialize in, in one night, whether that be the band or a bowl on TV, the team, the football team itself. There's, there's an energy about Dog of Palooza that's really inspiring and gives you a sense of home. I was at the junior high on Thursday afternoon, or no, Wednesday afternoon, and whenever an athlete or somebody else sent an extracurricular goes to the state competition, the entire school comes out and applauds them as they walk through the school, which is, I think, relatively new, but really, really exciting. It's great to see, especially at that age, kids rally behind each other and encourage each other. I've seen the tennis court get a ton of use, which is, you know, all these things, they drive home what we're here for and put things into perspective, and those are the things that I look for and that I enjoy being a part of this board for.
Recently sat through a course on servant leadership from Jim Hunter. If you don't know who he is, I would highly encourage you to look him up. And as he was speaking, I couldn't help but think of the many servant leaders that we have in our district. Some are in the room, some are janitors, some are teachers, and we can always look for problems, we can look for blemishes, but I think if we just take a minute and stop and think about the servant leaders that are around us, many of them do thankless jobs, and I just want those people to know that they're seen and really appreciate them. And we live in a phenomenal district, had three more staff added, and I think sometimes we need to reflect on how lucky we are, be thankful for that, and then ask ourselves, what can we get better at?
You want to go next? You don't have to go.
Okay. I got two or three things. First of all, Jordan mentioned Dog of Palooza, and that's always a fun night, it's a big, high-energy night. Prouds were huge this year. That is put on as a joint effort by our athletic boosters and our music boosters, and the funds that are raised go back to the booster clubs, and the final numbers are not in, but it's real clear that it was record income this year for the booster club lot of Dog of Palooza. And that goes to support all the high school sports, whether they're spectator sports or non-spectator sports, boys' sports, girls' sports, spring sports, winter sports, fall sports, it's not just football or fall sports that get the money. And the same in the music boosters, it's not just marching band, marching band participates, but it goes to support all the music programs, the music boosters, so just a fabulous night. And it's good to see parent, you know, sometimes, you know, we're all, we're all concerned about what our, what our kids are doing, right? We all support what our kids are involved in. So sometimes there's a little bit of a, of a friendly rivalry between the musics, some of the music families and some of the sports families, right? And that's probably one of the fun things about that event, see everybody working together, pulling together for a kind of lot. I think Jordan also mentioned tennis courts. Every time I'm by the tennis courts in the evening, there's at least three or four courts in action. I've never been by and seen them empty, I've never been by and seen one or two, but the community folks are out there leaving the courts on the weekends and evenings during the day, it's incredible. My high school tennis teams are, of course, using them, and it's just been a great addition to the community, and I appreciate the village working with us and being able to, of course, Chapeau helping us with some, with a grant from the state, and just everything it took to get that done, it was just outstanding. And finally, there was a little blurt on the news, some of you maybe have figured it out, but South Mohammed Road is not open, you can get through there. Again, a big project with us working with the village to make that happen. It allows access to this campus, to the south part of town, it allows us to access the south part of our property. You know, maybe someday we'll build there, that's why we put a road in. And, but it also opens South Mohammed to Prairie Road, which is, which is very nice for the community too. So again, a, a big win for everybody involved, and appreciate those.
Yeah, a couple of things. Just wanted to thank the teachers and staff for all their hard work, preparation for Homecoming Week. It's an exciting week, I know our family was pretty excited for the different Spirit Week days, things that are coming up, the Homecoming Parade on Wednesday, and our home football game against Taylorville. So again, thank you to the staff and all the volunteers that put together the Homecoming Week. I saw the cross-country hosted, successful event, Invitational this weekend, which they named after retired coach Tom Appenzeller? Did I say that right? And special thanks to cross-country coaches and staffs. I don't know if you saw, eighth grader Dawson Freeman took second place in state in golf. Dawson is a great kid, thought that was really cool, and it's really neat to see how the student athletes and the, the band kids and, and all the extracurriculars we have, how, how well they represent themselves, but also our district, so shout out to them.
Well, pretty much everything has been said. McKenna also, I think she was eighth grade? She made it to state in golf too, so I was happy to see that, well, well, many. I, I don't really have anything different than what you guys all said. The one thing that kind of came, comes to mind is, I was sitting at church on Sunday, I may get this wrong, we listened to the homily, and he spoke about forgiveness, and you don't necessarily forgive and forget, but you forgive and remember. And the older I get, the harder it seems to me for me to forgive sometimes, but I really was sitting there and I was looking around, I was sitting in the back, of course, I'm thoroughly, and I, and every single pew was filled, and it, it just was such a good feeling, and it just, it just made me think how awesome this community is, and, I don't know, in a weird way, I, I had peace come over me, and it, I do feel, I know there was a lot of passion that was spoken today, and I appreciate that, but we all have to remember we have the same goal, and, and we can get there, I really believe that, but we, we have to be on the same team, and sometimes we're gonna have to forgive and not forget, but forgive and remember to get to where we need to be. And believe me, I'm gonna probably eat my own words, I have a mind, but we can do it, we, we have an amazing community, and, and we do need God on our side, so, something like that.
Yep.
Um, I'm also gonna echo the Homecoming Week, it's also what we've been chatting about in our house, we're excited about the college hockey game on Wednesday, football game on Friday, the parade, so hope to see people out at those events, that'll be fun. One of the things that, I'm glad that you brought up being on the same team, because one of the things that, when, when I was able to, when I was given the opportunity to serve as president, one of the big ideas I threw on Kenny was, hey, I really want to get our meetings focused on why we're here, which is our kids. So I want to make them as, as obvious and front and center in front of us, so that before we start our work, we remember that those are the reasons we're here. And Kenny was like, alright, we'll go with that. He ran with it, and so thank you, Mr. Martin, for being the first one to duck him in. I'm sure you were voluntold, and I appreciate that. But that, to me, that's exactly why we're here, and I just appreciate that those kids were willing to be here, that you were willing to bring them out, and, and it's a good reminder to all of us that as a board, we are here just to serve them and make sure that they are getting everything they need, so. So thank you, and thank you, Dr. Wade, for, you know, going with my craziness. Alright, um, financial update, the financial packet was in there, Heather is here, does anybody have any questions or comments? No? Good? At least good? Alright, fabulous. Student support services update from Christine Northrup, that was also in the packet.
Absolutely, so just kind of highlighting our pre-K at-risk program. You guys know, um, parents of little people out there that, that want to be screened, we screen any and everybody, you know, to see if they need the qualifications to come in, we also have some students who enter and then their parents pay for them to attend, it's a really nice thing for all of our kids, and that classroom, great language models and things like that. So we love to see all kids in the district, particularly before they start kindergarten, so if you know, if you are a parent or you know parents of littlest.
Thank you. Any questions for Christine? Okay. Superintendent Report, Dr. Bagby, do you have anything to add to your report?
No, it was high-level English language learner program, and kind of where we are with the numbers, and we, as you can see, thank you, as you can see, the increase in numbers is serious, I want to say thank you for approving the additional position for another EL teacher last school year, so that we could be ready for some of our additional students this year, be able to support them. So thank you for that, and if there's any questions, please let me know.
Yeah, I was amazed how much it went up, from 26 to 72.
And the number of screenings, 27, AC teacher, this is the most like by far that she's had to screen alongside Jackie Rusley this year.
I don't think it's a little bit educator, I apologize.
Yep, go for it.
Do you do access testing?
Yes.
Do you have, I don't get this right now, out of curiosity, do you have a breakdown of their levels?
I do.
Okay, I would, that would be great. If you speak a bit, would you share it with the board?
Yep.
So basically, what extent it may be.
Yeah, so as part of their screener, in January, February, we use what's called access testing, and so they can score a one, which is like beginning level, English level proficiency, usually newcomers to the country, and so we have six newcomers to our country, first time in the country and enroll in our school district, so very, very limited English proficiency, and they're tested in their reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And then the highest they could get on this test is a six, and so in order to receive services, they have to have less than a five on their screener, and then to exit, when we give that test in January and February, we get the test results over the summer, they have to have what's called a 4.8 or higher on that. And that is, it's, it's a pretty tough test, especially when it comes to the speaking part of it, and some of the listening parts of it, it's impressive what is required on that test that they have to be able to do. But yes, our students range anywhere, we have six students in the one range, all the way up to that four to five range. Big difference between some of our students is their social language, and their conversational language might be really strong, they might be able to talk with their friends, they might be able to talk with the teacher, be able to get what they need, but then when it comes to the academic language in their social studies classroom, their science classroom, their math classroom, that's where sometimes that, that extra support is needed for them to develop that English language proficiency. So that's kind of just a little bit of the range that we have in the district.
What are the ages? Have a, do you see mainly like ELL students younger ages, or are they all over the board?
They're all over the board, but I will say the majority are in this building here at MPE through our pre-K program, all the way up through second grade. They're all over the board, but I will say the majority are in this building here at MPE through our pre-K program, all the way up through second grade. Um, LT also sees a great number, but this building, MPE, does have the most students. Um, just with students being new, you know, joining the district, whether, um, English is not the primary language spoken at home. Um, but we do have students up through junior high and high school. I'm just not as. Yes, you're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to put you on the phone.
No, all is good.
All right, Dr. Lee, some other reports.
Yes, uh, just a couple of housekeeping things. I appreciate the work that Mrs. Smith has done on the budget as we end in conjunction with policy four colon one zero, uh, that is up for adoption tonight. Um, with regard to policy four colon one seven zero, we have had our annual review of our safety plans with our local first responders and waiting on feedback on from them for our yearly review. We're also in the, the heart of our mandated trainings, uh, through the Global Compliance Network. We have, uh, brought in a new provider for that, that's, that's going on this, this fall. And, uh, just as a reminder that, um, all employees, uh, should not be soliciting for donations or sales on school grounds. It's just a yearly thing as well. Um, also as we enter cold and flu season, um, I've taken a couple of questions about, um, if we provide testing, uh, for COVID or things like that in our office. And, and we do not test, um, at, at, at any of our, our school buildings. So it's just, um, you know, we, we encourage people, if they're not feeling well, to stay at home and certainly not return to school unless they, until they've had a 24-hour.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions for Dr. Lee? Okay. All right, regular unfinished business. Core Strategic Team is first. And I really just want to make sure that this is always on there when we, following in an SCS TV. Uh, Jordan Rock and I were there on behalf of the board. Dr. Lee was there and Dr. Volz was there. We all met through our, um, strategic planning process prior. Oh, Dr. Bagby just was there. I apologize. I'm embarrassed to do that. Um, we were in this room. It was, uh, how many, uh, it was packed.
I believe there were 38.
And, and it was wonderful. So we started off with just a lot of, um, overview, high-level overview of things that are happening in the district. We talked about technology, safety, curriculum, finances.
Communications.
Oh, I forgot communication. Um.
Communication.
Couple, a couple, I mean, we, we kind of gave some big picture facilities, talk about facilities, just some big picture reviews, things that, you know, we've kind of all heard before. Um, and then we talked about what the goal is of our Core Strategic Team to really get an idea of what we want to get out of our district. Um, and then the end of the evening by breaking up and working with our faculty teams to come up with a potential mission statement. Um, we learned that the last time that had been updated was, it was created in 2010 and I think revisited in 14?
There was a little bit of work done for strategic planning in 2015.
15. Uh, but pretty much everything we're going on is from 2010. So, um, we had some conversations around what a good, um, mission statement would be. And so that's kind of how we left it. And Jody is going to email, uh, all that information out to our team. We're going to come back the next time, October 10th, um, and kind of vote or, I don't know, maybe even condense and reconfigure, um, and come up with a mission statement. And then we're going to start moving into the other pieces of the puzzle. Um, Dr. Gold's mentioned that we'll put people together into teams to focus on some different areas. So he encouraged people to think about what might be, um, of interest to them. Um, because facilities is obviously going to be one of those teams, one of the thoughts that I had was that we would pause our conversations and hear about facilities until we hear more from our community about what it is that they're kind of looking at, as opposed to them feeling like they need to hear what we're saying in order to decide their, make their decisions. Um, so that's why I, I asked Kenny to take the, uh, facilities conversation off the agenda because I really would like to hear from our community members before we start chiming in on our ideas. Um, any questions?
What, uh, of the folks who were offered a position, how, what was, how many, how many declined the offer?
We didn't have any good decline, yes. So if they, if they filled out the application that we had online and, and that they were available, um, for that, everybody who we invited, uh, we did have two people who were absent. Um, so maybe, maybe that would be the, the decline. We'll find out the next time.
And then how many of these meetings do you plan on having?
There's four. We've got October 10th and then there'll be, uh, another one in October and then one in early November.
What's going to be your, your measure to decide if these were successful or not? What, what's the end goal with this? And are you measuring your success along the way?
So what we'll do is, is right now, um, in the, the planning phases, obviously, mission, vision, uh, goals, um, value statements. And then, um, we will bring the, one of the first measures will be that, I mean, that's kind of the voice to the community, right? We've got a lot of parents who are involved, a lot of community members. We will bring that to, to the Board of Education for, um, strategic plan, you know, approval.
It'll be a recommendation.
So to speak, it'll be a recommendation to the board. From, from that point forward then, is when we will implement a, a process called Living Strategic Plan. So that's when we'll have our, our goals. And then all of those goals will have indicators and we'll work with Educational Leadership Solutions to make sure that, that all of those indicators and what resources we need for those. And then as we move through that process after that, that's when we'll be able to, to measure, A, the, the plan and B, are we achieving those goals in order to make those, that plan work?
Perfect. Thank you.
You bet.
One thing, I'm sorry, I have a question to ask. Is Dr. Volz going to attend a lot of them?
He's facilitating everyone, yes.
Uh, one thing I did want to mention is when we looked at the applicants, we tried very hard to get a very balanced, um, group. So we had males, we had females, we had people who have been here zero, eight years, nine, 17 years, 18 years plus. We had people with kids, pretty much it's like, it, it, it was kind of eerie how it all kind of broke out. But we had people with kids in Middletown, at Lincoln Trail, at the junior high, at the high school. Um, people who are community members, people who are just parents, um, not just parents, that was the wrong word. But good people who are parents, people who are community members, great staff who have given up their time to do it. Um, which was, I felt that pain at age 15. We were all like, oh my gosh, it's so late. But I mean, they gave up their night and came out and did it. It's great. But we have pretty nice representation across different groups of people. Um, and that was really kind of the goal, was to just kind of get a little bit of, of everything.
Is Dr. Wilson providing any updates through this process or no? I'm just.
Uh, let's go watch. I don't think he planned to.
I don't believe so. Okay.
If you'd like me to chub with him.
Uh, just curious.
Should I hang out with him? Is it right?
No.
I know, he's a good guy. All right. Um, next item is budget. Heather Smith, can I come on up? Um, we are going to look, we do have it. Are you going to connect or put anything up?
Uh, no, we don't need to. Uh, no, um, nothing has changed since the hearing. Um, so tonight I'm taking any questions if you guys don't have any questions or anything like that. There may be budget transfers that I do throughout the year and that is just, for example, somebody, if Ryan decides to spend more and purchase services, um, then in supplies, he can actually transfer it over, um, throughout the year too. But the bottom line would stay the same.
Heather, you did a nice job of talking through it the other night and answering questions along the way. We appreciate that.
Thank you. But, no worries.
Are all the, uh, all the boxes checked?
Yeah, I just have to add your names to go here.
Oh, I guess they have to vote.
Yeah, I'm not going to put you guys in there unless, unless you voted.
Can I see it when it turns green?
Sure, I'll send that to you.
I just want to echo what Back said. Really appreciate all the questions that you answered the last time this was presented. I know, uh, we might not have very many tonight, but you answered a lot of questions for us at the last meeting, so.
You can dive in. And you guys are always welcome, you know, to come and meet with me or look if you ever want to see anything. So, thank you. Thank you.
I can bet she did a good job of that. I've bent her ear a number of times.
No, I, I like it because I, I like for everybody to understand and it's, you know, if you can.
I think it's great to sit in on like, and listen to the questions that you asked her as a non-educator. I'm like, uh-huh. I didn't think about it that way. I, it's really neat to kind of throw those.
We tap calculators.
All right, any questions for Heather?
No, I moved you from, uh, by 24, what did you say?
Thank you, Max. Can I get a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. All right, let's do a roll call. Rock?
Yes.
Lan?
McComb?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Anister?
Yes.
Severns?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes, thank you, Heather. Thank you.
Um, okay, new business, uh, presentation of the EIS Administrator slash Future Salary Investor Report, Dr. Lee.
Yes, this does not require, um, board approval. I just, um, like to present it to the Board of Education. Uh, it is in, in school code, but we need to post the EIS report, which, um, outlines all of our teacher and administrator salaries um, and, and benefits and retirement enhancements, meaning our TRS payments, uh, prior to October 1st of every year for the school year of previous. So this is for last school year and prior to us posting it on our website to be within that requirement by October 1st. I'd just like to run it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, does anybody have any questions on this? Thanks for sharing.
You bet.
Um, okay, the IMR report.
So this is, this is something similar too. We are required to post anybody whose, uh, packages are in excess of $75,000 um, that are, that also participate in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. And, um, th- this is just a yearly thing. It will be posted by October 1st as well. I just wanted to, to make you aware of it and present it to you, uh, prior to us posting it on the Board of Education website.
Okay. Any questions on that? Why is, um, noticing that our best try to monitor.
Yeah.
Their registration days or personal days with.
Sorry.
That's okay. Curious about that.
You asked a different question than what I anticipated.
Oh, okay. And, well, tell me a little bit about why Nancy's line looks so different than any of the others.
Sure. So, um, within our, within our contract, I'm assuming that depending on how many years you've been here, you get a different amount of personal days. Um, but then, but then when you look at the total compensation as well, um, that's what I was, uh, looking at, um, with the, the total annual salary. Um, so I went down convinced that that was a, a mistake with Mrs. Smith and it's not. Um, there's just a lot of training, um, that's provided. We have miscellaneous opportunities for our employees to wash buses, clean buses and things like that. Um, there's, um, a myriad of opportunities, especially that's all based on seniority, um, to go on, uh, field trips, sporting trips, things of that nature. And then, um, when you look at seniority and maybe longevity of an employee, um, that has been here for quite some time, um, business rates over time increase, the hourly wage as well, the hourly rate.
Thank you. All right, any other questions on that? Great. Um, policy two, two 30. Um, so these are, is it okay if I jump in on this?
You bet.
Okay. So, um, this, all of the policies tonight are really intended to be just first readings and conversations. Because we have some, um, conversation around, uh, having open comments and live streaming and things like that, I, I kind of felt like maybe this was also the right time to bring up how we are doing public comment. Um, we are not voting on any changes tonight. We're not, you know, making any, any big, uh, any big decisions. Um, but what I would really love for you to think about is, is, is public comment meeting the needs of our board members? Are we, are we able to conduct business better because of public comment in the way that it's set up? Um, would you like to see any changes to that? If so, what would they be? Um, what is the intent behind public comment? Is it, are, are we serving our constituents as best we can? Um, so really that's, that's really kind of the whole conversation around this policy and whether we want to change anything on that. And then same thing, changing anything within that policy, how that would then affect people when they come in to actually fill out their form, what would be communicated to them as well.
Do we know how other districts do it? Are, are we very similar?
Yeah, we're pretty similar. Um, districts, from what I've experienced, may differ sometimes on where they put it on the agenda. Some people put it at the beginning, some people put it at the end, um, some people limit it to three minutes, some people keep it at five. Some people have it where you can only come in on something that's on the actual agenda. Um, but I mean, as long as we're providing an opportunity for open comment, for public comment.
So we had always been at five minutes a couple of years ago. I think we made a change to if there's more than 12 speakers, we'd go to three. Because we were debating, but some, some places just use three minutes. That's the number. We said, well, we keep it at five, but if we have, you know, more than 12 speakers, then we're going to go to three. Uh, something that we, we talked about placement, should it be at the end? So we get a business and then comment. Always cut to the beginning. And then there are times that we've said, you know, this is a business meeting, we certainly need to have the opportunity for public comment. But we felt maybe that we should cap it at an hour. And there's been discussion about that various times. We've never done that. I, I would, I would submit that if we're going to do that, it's better to do that now during objective review of the policy that is.
In the moment.
In the moment, when you've got a situation to deal with. Uh, but the thought was, I guess, that by going to three minutes, if there's more than 12 speakers, that, that's kind of shortening the time. You know, there, there have been instances, very rare, very rare, uh, we would, you know, do that. I remember one night we had three hours of public comment. Well, it's kind of hard to get to business. You've got three hours of public comment, but it was an important issue and people wanted to be heard of. And that was before we put the three-minute P-S-A. So that's a little bit of the background history.
So, how many times in your years, uh, has it gone over an hour and there's been a three-minute time limit?
Since the three-minute time limit, it has not. And that's been a place.
Oh, I have to say.
Yeah.
Met any, anything related to COVID, masking.
Yeah, but we weren't on three minutes. We were on five. I believe we switched to three minutes inside of that year. But that was, that was a period of change. So it's probably not, so it's probably not a really great question, Jill. I'm sorry. Because it's, it's been pretty recent.
Well, it's a wonderful question.
Well, we've been, uh, we've been over our numerous times already.
Uh, yes, and I think, um, I think the concern comes because we want people to feel heard. But especially, I mean, we can, we can address the COVID thing. We heard the same thing from all 100 people who stood up to talk. You know, either they were for this or they were against this, whatever this might be. And so, but they, but they felt that they had a different way of saying it, so they needed to be heard. The challenge then becomes when you listen to three hours of public comment or even an hour of, of public comment, to then get your brain back into business mindset and you're doing business at 11 o'clock midnight and you just don't have the, the functioning at that, that, I mean, night.
I, I think public comment is very important and I think it's deserved, the public, if they have concerns, whether they're positive, negative, they deserve to be able to come in and talk to us. Like that's.
That's kind of where.
However.
I'll see.
However, as long as it serves a purpose and there are ways to be angry about something and still being able to present it in a nice way. And I can tell, I don't know about any, I'm speaking for myself, but when I feel like I'm being, and I use this word loosely, attacked, I stop listening. And, and I don't, I, I'm done. And so, and I feel like it's a waste of my time and the speaker's time. I, I feel like maybe if there's some rules about how you have to be respectful and it goes both ways, then great. But I've been in here too many times where I have felt extremely uncomfortable and, and adults aren't acting like adults. And that's when I feel like we should be able to step in and say, look, we're done. Like, I don't know why we have to sit and listen or anybody else to people acting in a, in a bad way. That's not a role model for our kids, for anybody. So I, that's my only concern. It's like, if they're going to have public comments, then. then they need to be respectful and serve a purpose, a healthy purpose.
So, okay, so I, I hear that, I agree with you. I'm thinking about where that might fit within the policy, um, or how you might, um, make that a little bit more, um, objective, I guess? Because what's respectful? Yeah, what's respectful? Go ahead.
My name, Jim. Um, so a, a couple of things that I've seen, um, that, that helps to combat that a little bit. And the first thing is that, um, I have seen where, um, you have to turn in your, your sheet five minutes before, uh, the call of order. And what that does is that that eliminates, um, someone thinking up something at the last minute and then not prepared at our, at our podium, uh, to, to go. And then you just, you, you never know what's gonna, what's gonna occur. That is, is one thing that I've seen with that. The other thing is that I would, I would encourage all of you to, um, review policy eight colon three zero, um, which is, is how to act, um, our expectations of, of, whether it be you, if you're at a tennis match, or if you're at a board meeting, or you're at a, a band concert. Uh, we, we have expectations of how people behave, um, with regard to that. And if you're, um, Max and, and Sunny, um, last fall, we had a, a gentleman on our, our school property who did not follow, follow within our guidelines of how we're going to act at school. And we did, um, implement the, the, uh, there's a process in, uh, policy eight colon three zero that, that just doesn't allow people on, on school property for up to a year. So, um, those are some things that you can also take a look at and review.
Because I, I love to hear public comments.
Sure.
I do, it's fascinating. Yeah, I agree. When it starts to get crazy, I'm like, I'm done.
So I'm, I'm with you. It's important to have.
To deal with that, yeah.
One thought I had with, you know, if you were to move, uh, you know, from the beginning to the end, if we conducted all of our business and there was, uh, an item that we were going to vote on or discuss that the public had an opinion on, and then we already made our action and then they would speak. So we kind of were cross purposes with that, so.
Yeah.
So generally, what you do within that instance is you have it in two scenarios. So it's public comment for something on the agenda and then public comment for just public comment. Wild card is at the, at the, the end of the agenda.
I like that idea.
I think we, we did experiment with that briefly once. And then, you know, everyone says, well, yeah, what I'm talking about is on the agenda.
Everybody seems to find a loose, uh, connection to. Well, my, my favorite is like the budget hearing and it's like, I want to talk about curriculum, which is paid for with the budget, so it's part of the budget hearing, so.
Right. But I, but generally speaking, I think that's great.
Yeah. Um, one thing that I think you're kind of alluding to, Becky, in, in the sense of the fervor behind some of the, um, public comment, which I think we're going to get to a little bit later, but that, I, I intend to see two different types of public comment. I see public comment where somebody has a concern, they bring it to us and they say, we want you to consider this. And I, or I, I see on your agenda, you're going to talk about this, um, issue and here are my thoughts on it and I would like you to please consider blah, blah, blah. Or this, this is an experience I've had and here's what's going on. Yeah, I'd like you to consider this. Thank you for your time. But then I see the opposite of, I'm not actually here to talk to you as the board. I'm here because the board is giving me five minutes and I'm just going to speak my mind about whatever I want to speak my mind about. So that's where I feel like we tend to kind of get that disconnect between public comment. And I worry, my, in my role, there are certain things as a board member that we can, that we have some control over as board members. But I always worry like, well, it's great that you're going to come and have this conversation, but there's nothing we can do about that and there's not any, um, the fervor isn't going to help solve your problem, if, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I just, I, I feel like there's no closure. Sorry to be so short, but like, there's no closure. They're like, they're able to, you know, get up here and state their opinion, but we can't talk. Not to say like, we're going to say, oh, you're wrong, I disagree, but to be able to just be like, hey, I, I'm sorry you feel that way and I agree and you know what I mean? Yeah, like, I don't know, I just, as long as there's a purpose, but I just, I wish I could sometimes say, hey, uh, you know, I, sensing that you're feeling really extremely upset about that. I don't blame you. I hear you, I'm listening, you know? And that might calm them down a little bit, but instead they, we don't get to say anything. I don't know if that's like the law of school.
We just don't want to be engaging.
And I know it'll be more time, I know, but I just, sometimes I feel like it's warranted to be able to say, oh, look, I, I hear you. I, I'm listening.
I think we kind of say that with our bodies too, you know, with, with the.
Sometimes words, I acknowledge. So anyway, those, that's just what I, those are my.
Well, to your point, you mentioned, when you sit there and you're not feeling like there's any respect, even when someone says something, their comments that you might agree with, it's hard to feel any sense of agreement. It just feels so disrespectful.
No, it does. I mean, respect's a two-way street, so it's.
Something we could always do is if we wanted to try to do, and I said, and this is necessarily suggested, but it's something that we could think about, is if we wanted to break it into comments that are directly tied to agendas. And then just general comments at the end. You know, we could try that for three months and see if it, you know, nothing says that we have to make a change or settle it forever, right? We could try it for four months, for a period. Split and see if that works.
Or not, but I'm okay with trying new things. I think three minutes is plenty. I think of since May, the number of folks who couldn't have condensed what they said at three minutes hasn't existed. Um, I think we have to be careful though, Becky. I mean, I hear what you're saying, but if we're in a leadership position and we're making decisions, I think we're somewhat subjecting ourselves to different opinions. And I just want to be careful of that.
Um, no, I, I get it too, but.
Yeah.
Same time, I just feel like sometimes.
It's not a line.
It's just my heart coming out.
And it goes back to the catch and throw that we did with our board training, right? Like, I hear you, I, I'm not going to necessarily say, oh, you're right, we should do that because then that becomes like, oh, Becky Severance wants to vote for it and she told me I was right and that's not.
I'm not saying they say you're right.
No.
I'm just, you know, validating.
Yes.
Validating.
Social worker, good job.
Yeah, I just, I feel like it's not easy to come up there and talk in front of the.
No, it's not, it's very difficult, yeah.
I would have preferred people to do that.
Yes.
I don't know, I just wouldn't, we're in a public body, we serve the public.
I'm listening. And I agree with that, I do.
You know, you're.
Yeah.
Sometimes you need those candid conversations. Um, and if we're going to make diff- we've been elected to make difficult decisions and we've had a well-thought-out decision, appreciate their, their input.
If there was a majority of the board would go to three minutes instead of five, I would be fine with that. I, I kind of was behind the five-three option that we've got now because we had disagreement on the board about whether we should go to three or say at five, so that's. If folks felt strongly.
How many times, Max, in, uh, this is another great question? Would the twenty people speak? And chime in in your ten?
During COVID, pretty regularly.
Okay.
Maybe we have during contract negotiations.
Contract negotiations that have happened. There was an infamous meeting years ago where we were going to try to cut two million dollars out of the budget because we had to. I think public comment went on for hours that night. Uh, there was a personnel issue once where we had probably forty-five people speak one night.
Oh, it takes us another pandemic.
You know, if I had to average it, I would say twice a year. But that's skewed heavy by events like COVID, right?
Yeah.
You take COVID out of there and it's probably once a year.
Cause I think I'm more apt to be comfortable with a timeframe that we're willing to do it. I mean, that's why we limit it to an hour.
Oh, I see what you're saying. And then you base the length of time to kind of the number. I do like Kenny's idea of having it turned in five minutes prior to the question. Because while, you know, we have had situations where we have six people ready to speak and then all of a sudden like people out here are like, ah, I'm going to add to that. And then they turn in their form a minute, you know, and you start out at five minutes and then you start adding more and more.
Especially if you're going to make a decision for how much time people get based on the number of parties involved and that becomes a little more difficult to do.
We, we've had them try to add while it's in progress and that's very awkward.
Right. I have a question, just to clarify, the yielding my time, is that a real sign? I've, I've seen that in like C-SPAN stuff, like that doesn't. No, it's not, I've seen it besides tonight and other things. That's not, I mean, it's just.
It's not, it's, it's five minutes per person. But.
Is that on, is that on our sheet?
I mean, it doesn't say you may not yield, but it says each person will get five minutes.
So maybe we could clarify that as well, like there's no. You can't, you can't give someone your time. Which, that makes me think, do we have any guidelines for breaking the rules? Like, how do we enforce it? How do we track, you know, who's done what? And are there any repercussions for not following our policy?
That's a repercussion.
Got it.
I think, and then I'd have to have.
Is that right? Don't think we want to get into a practice of barring people from.
No, no, or, or having them removed. I mean, it's just not good practice.
You all heard me say before, the behavior you walk past is standard you said.
That's good.
Are there any changes as of right now that you would like Kenny to perhaps modify with the business policy before we bring it back next meeting? Do you want to think some more about it?
I really like the four meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
I like the three minutes.
Do you like the three minutes, Jeff, or do you like the maximum of sixty minutes? And the time per person will be adjusted to fit within that maximum?
I think three minutes and, and we have that many people to go. I don't think we can do that.
Can't?
What, what'd she say?
Okay, if you have three, I don't know. If you have a maximum set time of sixty minutes, can you stop public participation at sixty minutes?
Yeah, they would, they would go by order that they.
Turn it out.
Turn their sheets, yeah. I mean, you could do that.
I don't know, it's very.
But I mean, like. It's a big negotiation, it's not big, that's.
Yeah.
And it's different, yeah.
And then, and then who sets that? Uh, this is a big topic.
I know.
Well, I'm. Over sixty minutes worth of, so if you have over twenty people who are speaking, it's the first twenty to turn in their forms.
Which I don't think you'll have that in.
You say that. Just take one thing.
That would be the way to do it. If, if you were to do it, you would say, um, three-minute maximum and the first twelve people would fill in their form. So they turn it in. That's how you would do that.
How do you guys feel about that?
I'm not saying you should, but I'm saying that's how you would.
I'm not in favor of that. Um, I just don't want to turn people away. If it's really important, people need to be heard, I think that we just, I mean, if it's three minutes, that definitely comes down to time. And if it's a handful of times, once or twice a year, or a handful in your sixteen years or seventeen years, to me, that's not an issue, but.
Sixteen or seventeen years of one sit here.
I.
I, yeah, I think three minutes is good.
What do you guys think about the agenda items at start and then public comment for non-agenda items at the end?
But all at once. They didn't usually the same, so.
Here's what I like by having it at the beginning, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Sometimes it goes late.
I think we leave it.
At the beginning.
Yeah.
As much as I like that in theory and practice.
It just, it feels like we're, if we move it to the end, it makes.
No, I meant two separate topics. So the only thing at the end would be something we wouldn't be voting on.
Most comments.
Frankly, that starts to get late, like it's more done with business.
Yeah.
Word of mindset that we're.
Tired.
Tired and done and a little less secure.
That's a good point.
It feels very restrictive doing it though.
All right, so I just want to make sure that I heard everybody correctly. So Kenny is going to see about adding language in about a five-minute maximum, right? We did not want to get leaving in about a sixty-minute time limit. We don't want to separate out the beginning and want to keep, keep it at the beginning and then maybe be more explicit with the expectations from eight colon thirty?
So with eight, with then, and then six.
Yeah.
Something in the five minutes before.
Oh, and then the five minutes.
I think that would be really good.
Yep. Could, could we maybe add to this, like, is it saying, like, who's.
Yeah, there, there was another sheet that he had.
So could you say something on here that, you know, I'm agreeing to, uh, buy by this policy? And then when you sign in and sign this, and if you're not adhering to it.
There's an instruction sheet.
Yeah, he's got it.
So I have both.
Oh, you want to be have both?
So is that what this says? That's, I'm going to abide by the guidelines set forth?
Then if you don't, we can follow it gone.
Then if you don't, I'm not saying like you want to throw something out. You're like, look, like you said that you were going to abide by this, but you didn't. At least it gives you something to work back on.
Try to have this out, Kenny. You know, like it's like all check socks.
Sure. I got so much exposure on real estate.
Yeah, nobody reads those. I mean, just maybe hold people accountable.
Now, this face must not be dead or ever.
Okay. So that's a good start. Kenny will bring it back next meeting. If you have a chance, if there's anything else we want to do. Anything else you want to chump them with changing or looking at or reviewing? All right, let's move on to policy four sixty.
Yes, um, in reviewing policy four sixty, I noticed that normally, um, there is a, um, number associated with, uh, being, if you look under four sixty, it's one, two, three, the fourth paragraph where it says, adoption of the annual budget authorized as superintendent designated purchase budget, supplies, equipment, services provided the state laws follow. Purchases of items outside budget range require prior board approval except in an emergency. Notwithstanding the above, the superintendent shall not commit to any single non-customary purchaser expenditure, excluding personnel without board approval unless an emergency situation exists. Um, there's normally a number in there that's after excluding personnel and, and there's not in our, in our policy. So, um, but that was, that was.
What would the purpose of that have been?
The purpose was to make a point, they didn't want anybody to spend anything that was non-customary.
Without work.
Correct.
What do you mean a number?
So that Kenny, go ahead.
So the, so if you go, if you move back a couple of pages, there's a highlighted one in yellow that would just say up to, and this is up to the, the, what's, what statutory that, um, we would have to, to have.
It used to be up to twenty-five thousand.
Yes, and, and then we, because then you have to go to bid if it's.
Right, and that got taken out because there was a feeling that we didn't want anybody to spend anything.
Okay, so.
I would be in favor of putting your language back in.
So basically, this is tied, without having a number in there, it is tying your hands in making purchases.
Right.
Because any, without that number in there, any purchase you want.
And, and really, you know, and, and Heather and I, because I wanted to know what, what number we had in there. And so then we went through to read it and there is a number in there. So, and, and then, I mean, technically, the board approves every one of our expenditures at the monthly meeting. It's just, if it would just, it's cleaned up, makes us feel more comfortable knowing that we can go ahead and, and, you know, if, if the air conditioner breaks, things like that, that there's, there's just a number in there. And it's just best practice to have a number.
Be in favor of restoring the old number into the procedure.
So raising it to about twenty-five thousand, why does it have to be twenty-five?
Because twenty-five, when you have a bid, if it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five you have to bid, I guess, thank you. Yep, thank you.
I think we can't trust our people to make those decisions. Your point, we're gonna review it, we're gonna see it anyway.
So then why a couple paragraphs now? Number one, live materials and work involving an expenditure in excess of twenty-five thousand.
Must involve state heading law.
Right, so shouldn't it be twenty-five thousand and up, not in excess of twenty-five thousand, is that? Am I, I might be sweating hairs.
You know how, you know how auditors are, don't you?
Yes.
All of how you would.
I thought that's what this was about.
If we ever hit right at twenty-five thousand, we're gonna bid, I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna split hairs.
Is it twenty-five thousand or?
I, well, I, I, I thought that's what this was about. Alright, fair point.
Any other questions? Do you control that number?
How often are you making those choices?
Heather, how often are we all, fifteen thousand?
Not very often, I mean, if we are, is, I'll be honest, it's age back or something like that. Or things that need to be done, um, but I mean, it's, no.
Those are like time sensitive things, like gotta get this fixed right away.
Yes.
Probably conduct certain, probably gotta go on with it.
Other questions?
The ones are just on the ground, they don't break, there's so much.
Um, alright, let's move on to item five, policy seven colon two seventy about opioid and.
Yes, I've mentioned that, um, starting January first, uh, we have to implement where we have access to opioid antagonistics. So I've been hearing Mrs. Floyd on this, um, and she thought that if we were going to make an amendment to this policy or revision, that now would also be the time to add all, out utero. Which would be just additional asthma medication as well, um, these are provided free to her, um, to have. We're not going to have them, you know, everywhere throughout the building or things like that. She would administer those as well as, um, she would train our health EOPs if that, if we need that as well. I also want to point out, uh, one thing is that you can see that it does void the policy. Um, so, uh, section of the policy is void whenever superintendent designees for whatever reason unable to obtain for the district a prescription. From a healthcare professional who's been delegated restrictive authority, um, due to the substance acts, the substance use disorder act or fill the district's prescription for undesigned school. So with, these are, this is no expense to us and if, if we can't get those prescriptions for free, then the, the policy is void.
Where are these kept? Blocked under, like, does the, Kelsey keep them in her office?
I would think that they would be in Kelsey's office as well, except the health EOPs would have access to them as well.
Some, most of my mind is, we're at a sporting event, there's a basketball game at a high school, who has that, school nurse isn't there?
Sure, sure.
Is that, does somebody have access to that, do we have to respond to that, is this just for during school hours?
It's my understanding that it's just under school hours, but, um, if that's not the case, then my, my, uh, recommendation would be then that we would put them next to the AEDs as well. So I'll, I'll.
Sometimes.
I don't think at all.
Yeah, we don't always have it, but a lot of times, a lot of times we got random data to.
To your knowledge, has there been a situation where this would be needed before we adopt this policy?
Not to my.
Okay. I figured.
Uh, two more items on the open meeting, it is eight thirty, do we want to take a comfort break or are we going to do it prior to going into? Okay. Um, okay, uh, item six, one education meeting procedures, board of education, so. There are two things under this heading, first is open, open comments on YouTube. Um, we can take action on this, we can just have discussion. Basically, the question is, do we want to open up the commentary out of YouTube livestream as the meetings are streaming? Um, and if we want to take a vote on it, we previously taken a vote on it, um, we're welcome, we can take another vote on it if we want to. Um, either, either way, but I just wanted, I wanted to get that on the floor for discussion and get some thoughts on that.
No other part of OLOG TV, is there comments allowed anywhere? Why start here? We're gonna have to police it, someone's gonna have to respond to it. I.
Got somebody jabbed in.
Yeah.
Monitor.
My, my worry would be like someone, like a manager's name was used in there.
Yeah.
Is that subject to FOIA, is that, you know? When I think of comments, I think of headline grabbers almost that lack context or purpose. Um, actual purpose that affects positive change. Um, I think it's really hard to form, you know, well-thought-out. Comments in, in a YouTube comment section and we have a forum here for, for you to do just that. Um, if you were to put a five-minute, uh, well-informed, well-articulated speech into a comment section. That's, that's a lot of space and nobody's going to do that. So I would prefer that, you know, any communication that we, we receive from the community, uh, especially as it relates to business items. Take place here in person where they're well, uh, researched and articulated and, and communicated that way.
That was, so that, when we, last time we talked about this, my question went to, what is the purpose of opening comments, what would the goal be? Would the goal be to inform decisions that the board needs to make? In which case, I'm not, I can't say that I'm gonna have time after a meeting to go back and read all the comments in a board in, on a video. Or is the purpose to let people just vent their opinions and if that's the purpose, then is it our responsibility to provide a venting space?
For YouTube.
So that's where I was back and forth and I, I, i- if the goal was to improve. Understanding on the part of the board members, I feel like there's a better way to do that than through comments on a YouTube channel. And if the goal is to provide a venting space for community members, I'm not sure that falls to the responsibility of the district. So that's where, that's kind of where my.
If you have access to YouTube, you have access to email.
Yeah.
All of our emails are it.
Okay, well, um, we do have a recommendation, the superintendent recommends the approval to keep open comments on YouTube closed. As we previously decided and as presented tonight, um, do I have a motion to do that, if we vote on that tonight?
Okay.
Mr. Bannon is removed, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Sure, I seconded it, okay, any other discussion before we do a roll call?
Absolutely, that's not true, I, I just keep coming back to, again, like, we're, I don't want to restrict anyone's ability to. Give their opinion, I don't think anybody in here does. If you look at how many views we get on YouTube, it's not very many. Uh, and if the goal of that is to, to reach as many people as possible, I think there's other avenues, um, to do that. Like if it's a venting, I want to vent to everyone, I don't think that that's gonna accomplish, to your point, um, so that's.
And the goal is to communicate that, so it's not a record, it's not a record.
And we did, I can get emails, uh, texts, people, you know, hey, what was on lunch and talk about this, I feel like that's more valuable.
Absolutely.
People are really much.
I didn't say they were buying.
Oh.
I need to talk to you, go buy me a lunch.
I didn't say that.
We need, we need to talk a lot.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, Julie, can you give a roll call please?
Is your.
Four and a Pepsi.
He's still talking.
Uh, sorry, say that again.
Well, you're first on my list, so.
Okay, uh, so I am in favor of keeping the policy as it stands, so yes.
Call.
We're voting to keep them closed. Yes.
Vanster?
Yes.
Severns?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Lamb, McMurdo?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so on that same, um, same vein. Um, the live streaming of YouTube, so live streaming, it really started when Dr. Call came, like around that time, right?
Yeah.
And, um, that was meant to really increase transparency and make sure that our public, um, community, uh, everybody in the community is aware of what's going on. Uh, then we got into this crazy COVID thing where we were actually having meetings online, so that kind of created a necessity for it. Uh, so now we're actually at this point where it's a good time to kind of revisit it, have a conversation around what it is that we want to see as a board, how do we want to move forward with YouTube. Um, I really appreciate Kenny has done a nice job with, um, making sure that our meetings are following up all of our meetings. So one time a month, we have a study session where we are really focusing on having conversations among our board on a topic. And then another meeting each month is our actual business meeting, that's where we're actually voting on policies, discussing budget, discussing how we're going to be spending money. Um, those are two very different meetings and I feel like Kenny's done a nice job making sure that our agenda is aligned with those. We have a lot of options when it comes to whether we want to keep streaming, whether we want to stream portions, whether we want to stream all or some. Um, and I really just kind of wanted open discussion to see what your thoughts are and, and pros and cons and kind of see where we want to go.
Generally speaking, broadcasting our meetings are to. To what Kyle's been saying all night is, you know, make this as accessible as possible and as open as possible, right? And, and I agree with that. Uh, the only reason I would consider to, uh, you know, take them off of YouTube is if there's a staff burden. And try to, you know, compare and contrast and, and, and figure out, uh, I guess the risk reward of that relationship. Um, so, I mean, I, I hate to put him on the spot, but is it, is coming to two meetings a month, is it? Is it overly burdensome to anybody to, to put meetings on YouTube?
I have to be a regular. Other than that, it's, I think we want to grow.
Do we know how many people go back and view the study session once? Like, you. Well, I was just wondering, I know, like, to his point, there's something four or five. Usually they go back and watch, like.
How many, how many do you have on?
Are there a lot?
How many are on right now? Fourteen.
Fourteen, yeah, but the record is, if you go back.
And it's close to buying a car.
Yeah.
People would be.
So another question I had is, I mean, we put our minutes up there, right? So if you did want to go back and see afterwards what was discussed and voted on, you would be able to do that. Um, so then the question is, what does watching in person? More context, I guess.
I think it cap, it captures more information to you, right? I mean, you know, certainly, I mean, try to keep good minutes and do, but, um, you're not, you're never gonna have verbatim of it.
Right, it's not the intent.
Sometimes staff is interested in what's going on, but Dr. Reed's probably, he does a real nice job of putting on a nice summary the next day, what happened? I think most of them read that, it's quick and easy and formal and frankly. The public has minutes available to them, if the public wanted to know quicker, we could post that quick recap. Say the next morning, we'll post it to the staff. If we wanted to.
If we're limiting comments on person, in person comments, the amount of time. And we are considering taking some of this off YouTube or incentivizing people to come. And we just limited their, their time to communicate with us.
It's an interesting point. I will comment on the, on the comment part of it. It's been my understanding, the reason we allow public comment is to we, the purpose of public comment is for us to hear from the public. And there are those in our community that think the purpose of public comment is for them to broadcast.
Comment to the public.
Just comment to the public, to the greater Mohammed Seymour community. It's really not our mission in life to provide a comment forum to comment to our community, it's our mission to provide a handle for them to comment to us. And those comments, in my opinion, should be directed to us. And so that is one thing that frustrates me.
And, and Max, that's in policy, I mean, it's a school code and Mohammed Seymour Board Policy provides members of the public and district employees now to, to address the Board of Education.
Right, right. This is not, and, and that's important, we need to do that, we talked about that in the earlier tonight, but, but it's not. To, to share their views, whatever they might be and more, how much we may like their views or not like their views or agree or disagree with them. It's not for them to provide that to the entire community, that's not the goal of it, it's not why we do it. So that piece does frustrate me a little bit.
Um, so the average of going after it's been recorded is two hundred and fifty views, I mean, that's a lot.
Yeah, they do come back and listen.
Yeah.
Even study sessions, does that include study sessions?
Um, so I went back and did like the last, let's say, six. And they're getting like two fifty-three, two thirty.
I mean, that tells me a lot.
Yeah.
That's.
That's great, yeah, so I'm. So let me ask it, I'm sorry, Julie, to put you on the spot, I didn't realize you had done some, some studies on my journal. Okay, so my question would be, do you notice, um, study session versus business meeting differences? You go ahead and, and look at that, one of my thoughts was, um, I always appreciated when I was not on the board, I tended to come to meetings in person because I prefer to see that dynamic and be in the room. Uh, but I always appreciated at times when I was, had a kid thing or, you know, I was out of town, I wanted to be able to see what was happening in the meeting because I needed to actually, I, I. I didn't feel like I had enough of the dynamics of what was actually happening in the room. So I always appreciated, um, the, the YouTube streaming. That would be where I would go to for information. My only concern, and the, the only reason that I would consider, I, I knew that the staff burden was kind of in the back of my mind, but I, I don't know that. You know, we wouldn't be able to really save any money with it, so by not streaming it. The, the one thing that has become apparent is that it is incredibly easy for people who want to manipulate, um, recordings or manipulate media. To twist your words or twist your story, it's a lot easier for them to do that when there's a recording. And, um, my fear is that we have worked really hard over the past year as a board to get our story and the truth out there. And to help people understand kind of what our goals are and I worry that. And I don't know that this is enough to say, let's stop streaming, but I do worry that somehow words will be twisted. And once those words are twisted and that recording is out there being replayed and replayed, it ends up becoming, that ends up becoming the truth, even though that isn't the truth. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think it actually provides you with the evidence to the contrary, because you'd be able to find that.
But you don't want a blog to put that out there, sure, and, and to do, I'm not sure you're gonna be able to put the proof back out there.
True.
Well, okay, well.
I mean, unless you want to.
No, I, I, I'm gonna be as hard on time.
Okay.
Yeah, Jordan may actually have. I didn't think about this until he just said that. But we had a situation arise, I think some of us have seen this, where there was an audio clip. We, we did not film, we, we did not record the listening sessions, Board of Education did not record those. But somebody, the Virgil, except the Virgil.
The Virgil one was recorded.
Somebody recorded one. And, and there's a clip online of somebody saying. When you make comments, I'm going to record those comments, this way it was paraphrased, I had the exact quote earlier. And that has been put online. Now, I was there. Okay, and what happened was, there was a console. If you were there that night, you remember this. If you were there that night, you remember this, and Sunny was like, I wanna record your comments there. Okay, and then and pointed at the easel, walked over to the marker and then figured out that she needed to leave the beat and then do that. And um.
Mrs. Hunter.
Mrs. Hunter volunteered to take that over, okay? Now, if you listen to the clip and really listen to the words on the clip, it's pretty obvious that she's not talking about an electronic recording. Okay, just because of the way the words are phrased. But somebody just lifted that sentence and did that. Now, I guess if we would have recorded that and had the rest of the thing available.
True.
They would then become real quick. But, you know, whoever whoever uploaded that didn't upload the whole thing. They uploaded that little bit. So maybe maybe Jordan was right, maybe the manipulation on that uh would have been more difficult to deal with if we had recorded.
I I was there as well and can confirm that we weren't recording. Um, and what troubles me about that and not not to respond to everything was, you know, we didn't set this out to the people that were there, hey, we're recording this and it's gonna.
Oh, exactly.
So it's people like they have a really vulnerable concern, uh speaking about their family or kids in particular, that somebody had recorded that without anyone's knowledge. I think that's just a.
It's a pretty.
Con person. Is my, it's my understanding that when you record something, it's a two party consent.
It was an open meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Certainly, I would would argue the ethics behind it. Like one could certainly argue the ethics personally, um, it's open.
Mike, and I don't mind being recorded secretly or, you know, i- i- in an open meeting. My concern is more like exactly what you just said, that there are other people there bringing.
There be good bringing concern, there are no ideas.
And just a and just a handful of parents. So it's not like at that one was our our least attended one. So it's not like it would be in our pick up.
I was in Lincoln.
Yes, exactly.
Very disappointing situation.
So, so I guess maybe I I go the complete one hundred and eighty degrees, Jordan, and say, maybe we do keep going. And that way we do continue to tell our story through YouTube and really made a point of highlighting this is what the actuality is.
And and you know what? We have nothing to hide. Right?
Yeah, that's the thing, it's like.
Nothing to hide.
Right.
So.
Well, and the reason we didn't report the listening sessions is exactly what Kyle said. We didn't want, we we wanted people who might otherwise be in it and restrict, right, we want people to be comfortable in what they were sharing.
Um, all right, well, let's just, why don't we, why don't we take um a vote and um, would anybody like to make a motion about keeping to clarify, I put rub with before I make a motion, is everybody saying both study sessions and board meetings? And then the entire thing from start to finish or just the business portion of the meeting?
I'm all in favor of doing it all. I mean.
All right, do you wanna make a motion to that, Mr. Bannister?
I'm I'm that we keep all business meeting, the entirety of our meetings open on.
Fantastic. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, can we do a roll call on that for this, Jody?
Lamb, Jordan.
Yes.
Severance.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
McCone.
Yes.
Bannister.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes. Um, thank you for that discussion and conversation. We um had a possible approval of um a new employee, uh the director of building and grounds. I believe we may need to go into closed session for that prior, so we'll get you around. Would that be the most suitable next step? Okay, so um.
Any other reason?
Yes, okay, yes, yes. Yeah, I like that. I like.
So.
No, I like to discuss a couple.
So um, we are going to come out of closed session to address that um agenda item. So we will reopen up the YouTube feed following this, um but beyond that, we won't have any additional business, so.
We will have the YouTube feed open for that discussion. Yes.
Rock, following our closed session. Yeah, so a closed session is necessary tonight for the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee. A specific individual serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational or educational facility setting or a volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, it means to prepare an increased information to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government wage increase transparency app may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted in health and accordance with this app. Is there a motion to go uh to approve to go into closed session for that reset?
So move.
Yeah, a second.
One of one of what goes from.
One of what it asks. Are there any other reasons? No, there are no reasons. Uh, roll call vote to go in, please.
McCone.
Yes.
Severance.
Yes.
Lamb, Bannister.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes, we will take a short uh break after the close.